Good evening. Welcome to the October 17th, 2017, City of San Bruno Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Chair Chase.
Here.
Vice Chair Bia Sodi.
Here.
Commissioner Legacy.
Here.
Commissioner Lithon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bia Sodi, would you like to pledge?
Of course.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, indivisible, free and just.
Okay, first item on the agenda was approval of the minutes from September 19th, 2017. Do we have a motion?
I had a correction that should be made. It's with respect to the item that was added to the agenda. I actually abstained from that vote on page 21.
Which one was that again?
This is on page 21. It's the item, let me see, let me make sure I'm getting the right page. Is it six? Is that right? It's about Cherry Avenue? Mm-hmm.
Chair Chase.
This was the item.
Commissioner Mason had brought this to our attention. And this has to do with the item that was brought forward regarding 1670 Claremont Drive. And we would be happy to make that adjustment to the minutes.
Very good, thank you. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I motion with the amendment to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
My second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Okay, minutes are passed. All right. At this point in time, communications?
Yes, I have one communication tonight. We're happy to have our contract planner, Ami Ubadie, join us this evening. And Ami will be presenting the item 5B on your agenda. It's regarding 811 Cherry Avenue. So we welcome Ami to our meeting this evening, and she's been a great addition to our staff.
Wonderful, thank you, and welcome. Okay, any other communications? Is that it? So now we're going to public comment. Any items that are not on the agenda? If anybody here would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, now is your time. No? Okay. Open and close that. Do any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest? Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to recuse myself from item 5A.
Okay. You do. Okay. Well, moving on then, we are going to move right into item 5A.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. The applicant has applied for a use permit to allow a construction of a 790 square foot, first and second story addition to an existing single-family home that would exceed the maximum permitted .55 floor area ratio guideline. Subject property is located on Parkview Drive just south of Santa Lucia Avenue. The lot size is 5,031 square feet in total area, and is currently developed with a split level two-story home, consisting of three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. There's a total of 1,912 square feet of living area, and an attached two-car garage measuring 409 square feet. Single-family homes are adjacent to the subject property. As indicated, the addition calls for, it's a 798 square foot first and second story addition. Specifically, the main level would be expanded by 158 square feet and would accommodate a new and expanded dining room area. Additionally, there's a bedroom located on the main level that would also be expanded approximately 14 square feet, and that would be visible from the front elevation. The second floor expansion would amount to 626 square feet, and would include a new master bedroom suite, which would contain a new bedroom, a nice entrance, a dressing room and closet, and one bathroom. A decorative stone treatment is also proposed at the base of the home and around the garage. If approved and constructed, this would be a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom home with 2,710 square feet of living area and a 409 square foot two-car garage. As indicated, a use permit is required for exceeding the .55 FAR guideline. I just want to provide a little bit of background information to the planning commission. When the project was first submitted in April of 2017, the original proposal called for a total gross square footage of 3,441 square feet, which corresponded to a .683 FAR. This was well above the .62 FAR threshold that was established for the Crestmore rebuild area. As such, staff recommended the applicant reduce the overall square footage to be consistent with the FARs of the Crestmore rebuild homes. Per staff's recommendation, the applicant responded by submitting an updated plan in June of 2017. This updated plan reduced the overall square footage by 232 square feet, which corresponded to a .637 FAR. Staff further and continued to recommend a reduction in overall square footage. The project was ultimately reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee at their August 10th, 2017 meeting. At that meeting, the Architectural Review Committee forwarded the project onto the planning commission with two recommendations. The first recommendation was to reduce the overall square footage of the home by at least 90 square feet, which would be in line with the Crestmore rebuild homes, equating to a .62 FAR. The second addition, or second recommendation, was to replace the existing lawn located on the south side of the driveway with new lawn. The applicant submitted updated plans, reducing the overall square footage. The plans before you tonight are meeting the .62 FAR threshold that was established in the Crestmore rebuild area. Staff finds that the proposal does comply with the residential design guidelines. We find that it blends in well with the existing single-family home. Specifically, the second story is set back from the first story on the majority of the elevations. Additionally, the second story addition complies with the daylight plain regulations found within the residential design guidelines. Regarding exterior materials, the addition incorporates a combination of vertical wood siding and a cement plaster finish, which would match the existing single-family home. Additionally, I'd like to point out that the, when the applicant reduced the overall square footage by 90 square feet, they eliminated a home office that was located on the second floor. That home office has been replaced with a new roof deck. That roof deck would measure approximately 96 square feet in total area, and would contain three-foot-six-inch-high exterior walls. Those walls would be solid. From the exterior, those walls would be treated with horizontal siding, and would be painted to match the roof color, thereby blending in with the overall roof, and it won't really stand out. Additionally, to address privacy impacts, the applicant has, is proposing to install a series of potted plants along the west side and north side of the roof deck. Staff did send a notice to all property owners within 300 feet. Staff received five emails from adjacent neighbors and met with two property owners regarding the proposed project. Emails from the property owners are attached as Exhibit E to your staff report. And staff's formal response to those emails is attached as Exhibit F. The majority of the emails we received were from homeowners residing on Crystal Court, which is located just to the west of the subject site. Their concerns, summarizing their concerns, were related to potential privacy impacts, potential view impacts, and loss of property values. And then there was a request to install story poles as well. Staff indicated that the elimination of the second-story office would help mitigate potential view impacts and privacy impacts. Furthermore, staff pointed out that the, along the rear elevation, the master bathroom would contain three windows, but they're clear-story windows that would be above, six feet above ground level. Therefore, staff does not anticipate any privacy impacts associated with those rear windows. Overall, staff is supportive of the project, and we would recommend that the planning commission approve the use permit request based on findings 1 through 6 within the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 27. This concludes my staff presentation. I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Do commissioners have any questions for staff? No? This time? Okay.
Actually, excuse me. Matt, I do have one question for you. The rooftop deck's kind of an unusual feature. Can you review for me? What is the, are codes or are protocols for a rooftop deck?
There are no specific municipal code requirements when it comes to a rooftop deck. The most important thing that comes to mind is addressing potential privacy impacts. And the applicant has addressed those privacy impacts by installing, or proposing to install potted plants along the west side elevation and the north side elevation.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Nope. Thanks, Matt. I'm, is the applicant here? If you'd be so kind as just to step up to the mic there and give us a brief description, your name, and a brief description of the project.
Hello. Hello. My name is Kieran Bowen. I'm the architect on the project, and the owner of the project is also here. Basically, what we wanted to do here, as the accommodations have been described already, the existing house is a three-bedroom, one bathroom, and one powder room. And the current, the occupants, the owners of the house, have three children and the two parents, and frequent visits by the grandparents. So the objective here was to get some additional, a master suite for the parents, and to have each child have its own bedroom, and also be able occasionally to accommodate guests. And even the guests in our proposal would be taking one of the bedrooms, and the children would double up during that thing. So what we're proposing in terms of accommodation is not very extravagant compared with what's there. The other thing we wanted to do was to keep the floor print on the building without encroaching to the back or front of the site much so, for example, on the main living, on the garage level, we haven't extended the envelope at all, but we have altered the grating so that the family room is now able to step up to the rear yard and more connected with the rest of the building. On the main living and bedroom levels, they're split levels, we've extended one of the bedrooms just enough to get a desk. It's literally a bay, two feet by about seven feet wide, to make that room, which would be the occasionally shared room, more usable for the kids. And then the remainder of the square footage added on that level is in the U on the rear, where there was a space between a bedroom wing and a kitchen wing with a recessed dining room. We've infilled that space, so we're able to get more of a workable kitchen, and a laundry room, and the additional space to the dining room. And then lastly, the top level is just a master suite, where we tried to tuck in some home office. The other thing I wanted to address is just to clarify about the roof deck. When we had the home office there, we were working with the geometry, vertical geometry of the home, which is a split level, two-thirds down, let's say, and one-third up difference in the levels. And that we continued in the extension in the new master suite. When we removed the home office, it was the tallest part of the building, and by taking that out, there was a gap in the center of the building. That's where the deck is going, so it's a little bit misleading to say it's a rooftop deck, because it's actually the top-floor deck at that level. And it's an otherwise entirely pitched roof building. And that deck is in the middle of the roof, so from the surrounding buildings, the owner has gone to the neighbors who could have any view of it from the back and from the sides, and shown them what we're doing, and they're on board with it. As I say, what we've tried to do with the expansion, even the upper master suite, is to pull that back from the sides, from the front and back, and the deck then is tucked in the center of that, just as a little breathing immunity for the master suite. But it's not kind of cantilevered out over the back, or it's not on top of the rest of the building. It's literally opening out off the master suite. And then in materials and everything, we're working with the same color range, and we're adding stone where there was brick, but earth-toned fieldstone on the existing chimney and on the base of some of the exterior. And there's a rendered color board to show that there. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay. So, do the commissioners have any question for the architect? No?
No question, but just a comment I have seen this also at the architect meeting. And I think it's a very creative project, using materials.
Could you turn your microphone on? It's green.
Very soft voice. Yeah. There's a big.
You want me to, do I try again?
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this particular item. Seeing none, I will close it and bring it back to the commission for discussion, whatever. Anything?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bia Sodi.
Matt, I have a quick question, maybe you can address. Just for the sake of the folks watching at home, could you speak to the lack of a view ordinance here in San Bruno, and how that affects this? Please.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we did receive a few emails expressing some concern regarding potential view impacts associated with the proposed addition. We did respond to those folks and indicated that San Bruno does not have a view ordinance. There was also a request to, from a property owner, to install story poles, signifying the location of the proposed addition. And staff and the Architectural Review Committee elected against the installation of story poles due to a number of reasons. First and foremost, the city of San Bruno does not have a view ordinance, so views are not protected by right in the city of San Bruno. The proposed addition does meet all setbacks and height requirements of the underlying zoning district, which is the R1 single-family zoning district. The majority of the second-story addition is set back from the first-story below. And lastly, the proposed addition does meet the daylight plain standards outlined within the residential design guidelines.
Thank you. You put a lot of effort into that reply. I wanted to make sure that entered the record. Thank you.
Any other, or discussion on this between the commissioners? Well, I'd be looking for a motion or something, otherwise we'll be here all night long.
Then I move that we approved in the item, where's the number?
5A.
Oh, there we go. Nope, that's the phone number. Sorry. I'm blanking tonight. It's been a long wait.
Through the chair.
Down on the bottom.
Commissioner Legacy, if you look under the recommendation in the staff report, first page, that'll give you some guidance.
There we go, use permit.
Very good.
Use permit 17-102, based on findings 1 through 6, and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 27.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Took a long time to get to that. There is a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. Okay. Somebody want to get Commissioner Peterson? Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is 811 Cherry Avenue, and it is a request for a use permit to allow alcoholic beverage, beer, wine, and spirits sales with a type, with a Type 47 ABC license in conjunction with a restaurant, doing business as Hash House &amp; Brews. Per chapters 12.84, .210, and 12.96, .120C of the San Bruno Municipal Code. If we have a staff report, it'll be our newest member. It's all yours.
Good evening. It's too close. I'm Ami Ubadie, planner for this item. The applicant is proposing to add Type 47 ABC license to allow the sale of beer, wine, and spirits at a new restaurant, DBA Hash House &amp; Brews, in the Bay Hills Shopping Center. The subject site, 811 Cherry Avenue, space 19, is located within the Bay Hills Shopping Center at the corner of San Bruno Avenue West and Cherry Avenue. The owner is Bay Hills Shopping Center, and applicant is Nick Cigares, who is here tonight. There are multiple uses within the Bay Hills Shopping Center, including restaurants with beer, wine, and spirits, and other uses. The area near the project site includes tenants such as Niawee, Mazat Bistro, Jamba Juice, Cafe Grilla Days, Weight Watchers, and Big Mouth Burgers. The land use, parking, and landscaping requirements are included in the Bay Hills Shopping Center plant development. Within the context, the proposed site, proposed project is compatible with the surrounding uses. The restaurant area is approximately 2,630 square feet, with total 86 seats, and contains an approximately 1,235 square feet of inside, and 380 square feet of outside dining area. The restaurant will have a bar sitting, which will serve the same purpose as the restaurant setting, or sitting, to serve both food and drinks. Alcohol sales would only be available to diners at the restaurant. The hours of operation will be from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. The proposed restaurant is an allowed use within the plant development for the Bay Hills Shopping Center, and would replace a former restaurant, DBA Pasta Pomodoro, that is closed now. Use permit is required to serve alcohol in conjunction with the restaurant. If the planning commission approves this application, the applicant will also be required to obtain a liquor license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. The proposed alcohol sales would be confined to the dining area within the restaurant and the small outside sitting area. And patrons would not be permitted to take the alcohol off the premises as per the condition of approval. The city staff has already approved the building permit for an interior and exterior improvements issued on October 3rd, 2017. Staff sent a legal notice to all the property owners within 300 feet of the subject site on October 6th, 2017. No comments have been received as of the writing this report. Because Hash House &amp; Brews would be a restaurant and not a bar, and would be closed at 11:00 p.m., staff does not anticipate any negative effects from alcohol sales in conjunction with the restaurant. In addition, alcohol sales are not intended to be the primary source of income for the operator, but as a way to increase the pleasure of dining experience and to increase sales. The police department has also reviewed the application, and is not opposed to the application based on the recommendation, recommended condition of approval for this project. If any operational issues arise in the future related to this use permit, the community development director has the authority to call the items back to the planning commission. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions? Nope? Okay.
I do have some questions. On page 3 of the report, there's a reference here that states, "If nuisance activities associated with the sale of alcoholic beverages result, the community development director has the ability to call this use permit back to the planning commission for review if he or she finds that the use is negatively impacting the surrounding neighborhood or creating other concerns." What is the process for that, and what is the timeline between the time that the community development director would find out? I guess would that come to their attention through complaints from neighbors? What's that process look like?
Through the chair, if I could respond to that. We would typically encounter a situation where we would receive complaints to the city, to our department, and at that point, we would go out and speak to the restaurant operator, find out more about the nature of the complaints, and ask that certain activities that may be of a nuisance content be discontinued. If they persist, we would bring the item back to the planning commission formally. That could take 30 to 60 days before we would bring it back, because we would need to do noticing, proper noticing. However, like I said, if we would receive complaints, we would go out immediately and do research to find out what is the nature of the complaints, and speak to the operator about changing their operations accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Set. Answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes. Yes, I have another question.
Yeah, by all means.
Okay. Is the applicant here by any chance? I have a, so in page 5, there is a recommendation from the police department that the applicant install video surveillance system capable of recording and saving any crimes that are committed on the premises. I wanted to ask how you were going to plan on responding to that recommendation from the police department?
If I could, the applicant will come up to the microphone in a moment, and then maybe they can address that question at that point in time.
Okay, great. So I can wait then? I'll hold my questions until the applicant's up.
Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you mind stepping up to the microphone? If you could give us your name and...
Good evening. My name is Nick Cigares.
Okay. We definitely have a question for you.
You want me to give a little history, or?
Sure. Thank you.
I was born and raised in San Jose, graduated from Santa Clara Business Organizational Analysis Management Degree. I was brought up in the restaurant business. My dad and my uncle owned 10 restaurants in San Jose since '79, so I pretty much, you know, ran those. In 2008, my cousins and I started our own restaurant group, so I have, I currently have 10 restaurants. Eight quick-service Greek restaurants, two full-service restaurants. Our newest concept is the Hash House, which is in Campbell, and that's what brings us here. My broker contacted me at the Campbell location for this Paso Medora location, and when we started negotiating that deal, we wanted it to be open 7 to 3, because that's what our curtain, current formula is, is a breakfast-lunch concept. But Regency Centers, which is the landlord, wanted us to be open dinner as well. They didn't want a dark corner there, so we agreed to do that. And they recommended like a full liquor license, Type 47, which we're okay with, because I currently have two of them, so it actually complements our, you know, our breakfast-lunch, because we serve a lot of mimosas, Bloody Marys, and we have some signature breakfast drinks that we serve with our ashes and stuff, so it all goes well together. So we agreed to the dinner, so our hours would probably be 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 every day. I know we have 11:00 there, but we're planning on closing around 10:00. And if you can answer any questions that you have.
Sounds great. Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Yeah, what are your plans for the police's recommendation to install surveillance cameras?
Surveillance? We have surveillance in all our restaurants, so it's actively recorded, and I have them all on my phone, so all our stores have surveillance. Minimum of nine cameras, exterior, interior, everything.
And then the other item I circled was item 17, the interior stairway be constructed in an open-air manner to allow natural surveillance. If necessary to have the stairway enclosed, I recommend the cameras be included in the stairway to help prevent any criminal activity. I guess my, what is the second, if I remember correctly when I read the report, the second floor, is it going to be used for office space for now?
This building, I guess, before Paso Medora was there, I didn't know it was a bank, so they had like a conference room upstairs, they had like an employee restroom up there. And when Paso Medora had it, I think they did all their Paso Medora for all their locations. They had it set up there as like a headquarters for them, so they have a bunch of like printing information, and conference tables, and various rooms for now, which is, you know, just for personal use. So, I mean, we don't have any plans for it.
I guess my, what, what is the second, if I remember correctly, when I read the report, the second floor is it gonna be used for office space for now?
This building, I guess before Pasta Pomodoro was there, I didn't know it was a bank, so they had like a conference room upstairs, they had like an employee restroom up there, and when Pasta Pomodoro had it, I think they did all their Pasta Pomodoro for all their locations. They had it set up there as like a headquarters for them, so they have a bunch of like printing information and conference tables and various rooms for now, which is, you know, just for personal use, so I mean, we don't have any plans for it.
Okay. And is there any, is there any, I guess, response to the police's recommendation on seventeen about the interior stairway and the surveillance there?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions of the applicant? I have one. So you have then read all the conditions of approval and you're okay with all of the...
Yeah, and to answer the question that was asked earlier about, is that just nuisance in the property? Because I know A B C obviously monitors everything if you're overpouring or serving minors and stuff like that, so that's a separate issue which not gonna, I don't have any issues at my only locations, which is good. This is something separate that, that you brought up about like a neighborhood nuisance or...
Through the chair, if I could respond to that to, to provide clarification. There could be circumstances where the police department would receive complaints about activity at this location, which would be brought to our attention, my attention, and that's the sort of nuisance complaint that we would follow up regarding and check with the operator to try to resolve. So it would be more of a police complaint-related sort of action that would be referred to community development, and we, along with police, would follow up and try to sort out what are the circumstances, can the matter be resolved? If there's a concern that suggests that the matter should be brought back to the planning commission, we would do that.
Okay. Is that clear?
Yeah, makes sense. And just to emphasize, we're like a family restaurant, we're not a sports bar. We'd rather close at three and go home, but, you know, they, they want us to be open dinner, so we created a dinner menu to make everybody happy and everything, so...
Good, hopefully it will.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
If I may, as long as you're on the subject of menu, would you mind taking a moment to tell us about what you guys are planning on serving?
Yeah, so breakfast-lunch, we have like ten different ashes. We have a Greek hash, Irish hash, salmon hash, just a variety of veggies, vegan. We have about ten different Benedict's, scrambles, pancakes, waffles, chicken and waffles, ten different scrambles, ten different omelets, French toast. That's all the breakfast stuff. Dinner, we've incorporated a lot of small plates, about fifteen different small-plates appetizers, and then we have the stuff that we have for lunch. We also have for dinner, which are different burgers, sandwiches, and then we have specialty items, you know, different skirt steaks, chicken, pastas. Fairly, very extensive menu.
Sounds great. Any other questions of the applicant?
I think, I think I missed my chance to ask from staff, but I was wondering how many of the, the existing businesses at Bay Hills Shopping Center have liquor license already? There's gotta be some memory serves.
Mandaloon and Web have forty-sevens, I believe, so they have full liquor. Granny, that other place, I think two of them have beer and wine, the sushi place and...
There you go. Does that answer your question? Very good, because I couldn't do it. Excellent.
What is your, what is your timeline for opening?
It's been rough trying to find good help, so I'm trying to bring help from San Jose and Campbell area to get it started, and then, you know, eventually find the right staff here. I've had employees from the shopping center try to come get a job there, but I don't wanna piss off any neighbors, so I've kinda told them no, until I find, you know, our own people.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Nope? Okie doke. Thank you very much. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public who we should just speak about this particular project? Jump up there now or... Okay. Open and closed. Okay, so I will now bring it back to the commission for discussion, the motion, whatever the pleasure might be.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I can move that the commission approved use permit seventeen dash nineteen based on findings one through five and conditions of approval one through twenty-two.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, seeing none? It passes. There is a ten-day approval period on this one as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, and good luck. Moving right along, our next item, item C. Thirty-three-hundred College Drive. What do we have here? Recommended environmental determination, the project, uh, no. Request to, is this the one that is going to request to adopt a resolution? Doesn't seem to read correctly. I don't, I don't feel like I'm...
Yeah, it's at, it's, it's below the environmental determination request.
So it's a request to adopt a resolution recommending issuance of a grading permit to allow rough grading to a portion of surplus parcel B located on the east side of the Skyline Community College campus per section twelve point zero eight, point zero fifty, point C of the San Bruno Municipal Code. San Mateo County Community College District is the applicant and the owner. So, do we have, what do we have with this? Do we have a staff report?
You have a staff report.
Ah, there we go.
And, good evening, commissioners. This is an application from the San Mateo College Community College District to perform grading on an approximately two-acre portion of Skyline College Campus surplus parcel B. That's an eight-acre vacant parcel located on the east, at the east entrance of the college campus. So this is a little bit of an unusual item to be, for the planning commission to, to hear. Construction projects occurring on community college property are typically under, under the jurisdiction of the state architect's office, and they are exempt from local review. However, this is not a typical situation, and the reason it's not typical is that the grading site is also the location of a proposed residential project, which is currently going through the approval process and in fact has already been to the architectural review committee, and it's a completely separate approval process. However, the timing is such that the community college district is engaging in other construction activities on the campus which need fill for the, for the construction, for their foundation and so forth and grading, and the surplus parcel B is a, is perfect for that because it has sufficient fill to, to fill their needs elsewhere on the campus. So staff has determined that the planning commission should review the, the grading plan, and it's based on a provision in the municipal code that requires planning commission review and recommendation to the city engineer to allow grading on a property that is not associated with approval of a development project, and that may sound a little bit odd, but it, that approval process for the residential project is completely separate, and this grading plan and permit would occur before approval of that or, you know, the decision on the, on the residential project. So the grading plan, the grading will be done without a project approval. Does that make sense?
Not really, but okay.
Okay.
Confused me a little bit, have to admit.
So it was, it was a little hard to figure this out. So since the subject site is the location of, of the proposed project, the residential project, which, which also requires city approval, and, and the grading will occur before the decision on the residential project, staff felt that, that planning commission review is appropriate. And it's also appropriate because it provides noticing to the neighborhood. We did a, we're doing a one-thousand-foot notice, so we're noticing, you know, about four-hundred-and-seventy properties, and so it just keeps them informed about what's going on, and, you know, it, it sort of doesn't, you, you won't get the idea that, hey, this project is going forward and hasn't been approved. This is a completely separate grading permit. So, let's take a look at the, the site. So, the, the, the grading area is about two acres, as I said, and it's relatively flat and has no trees. However, the, the site itself does, does have some steep portions, so that's the, that's surplus parcel B is the larger area, and the actual grading area is right in the middle there, and so the, the proposed grading project will provide soil needed for the construction of a new environmental sciences building, which is on the west side of the campus, which is right there. Approximately five thousand three hundred cubic yards will be removed from the grading site and transported across the campus to the building construction site and will not be off-hauled outside of the campus. The adjacent area of, of parcel B slopes, as I mentioned, slopes deeply upward to the east property line and the backyard fences of the adjacent homes on Ross Way, which is, which are right here. So it's, it's, it's down slope from that area, so any grading or any sort of water flow will, will be away from the homes, it won't go towards the homes. So staff has determined that the planning commission can make the, the required findings that, one, the proposed grading will not adversely affect the drainage or later support of other properties in the area, and, two, will not be detrimental to the public health and safety for the following reasons. First, the city engineer has reviewed the grading plan and found that the proposed grading will not adversely affect the drainage or lateral support of other project, of other properties in the area. The proposed grading will have significant logistical and environmental benefits, including, including minimizing the distance travel by trucks hauling dirt, reducing the impact on city streets, and reusing soil on the campus rather than hauling it to a landfill. The conditions of approval require the contractor to employ measures to ensure erosion control and soil stability, slope stability. The conditions of approval include mitigation measures that were included in a, an environmental impact report, which was prepared for the, the master, the, the facility's master plan update for the community college district, which this environmental sciences building is a part of, as well as other construction projects and facilities upgrades on the campus. The applicant must submit a maintenance plan indicating contractor responsibility for complying with the erosion control plan and meet all regional water quality control board requirements. The conditions of approval also include appropriate measures for noise reduction, dust and emissions reduction, protection of cultural resources, hazardous materials and safety, and traffic control. Additionally, the hours of construction will be limited from eight AM to six PM during weekdays, and community development director approval is required to deviate from approved hours of construction. So that concludes my presentation on this item, and be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Mr. Peterson.
Who's responsible for the compaction of the material when it's relocated?
I think the, the representatives of the community college district are here, and I think they can, they can speak to that, but my, I imagine it's the, it's your contractor that's working on the, so there's a master contractor that's working on the environmental sciences construction project, and there will be a subcontractor that will be doing the, the grading.
Reason I ask is I heard your long description of the excavation, but very little about the compaction, so I was concerned that the city not be taking any responsibility for that.
No, and when you, you're referring to compaction at the environmental sciences, the new building, the new construction site. Yeah, that, that is, as I mentioned before, is under the jurisdiction of the, of the state architect, so the approvals and conditions of approval and so forth are given by the, the state architect.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes, I have a few. One is through the chair, sorry.
That's okay.
One is very easy, could you repeat for me the volume I could not, of a soil that will be excavated? I could not find it in the description.
Could you repeat that question, please?
I was, I was asking to repeat the volume of a soil that will be excavated and moved. I didn't see it in the report.
Five thousand three hundred cubic yards. That's about three, a little over three hundred truckloads.
My other questions are, the, the time that is expected to elapse between the, the bore soil use, the, the, the grading of this piece of land, and the expected development under the separate project.
I think the college district can speak to that, but the, the reason that we're moving forward with this now is that project is beginning towards the end of this month, so I'm thinking that it would be fairly quickly, it would be done within the next month or so, I would think, right?
I think maybe we should bring the applicant up to the microphone if...
I think that would be a good idea, but in terms of the project, the base project, that, that still is to go through the formal review process before the planning commission and city council, and then thereafter, there would be construction documents prepared. Those construction documents would need to be reviewed and approved by our building staff, and construction would commence. So we're talking many months away before that process for entitlements, then building permit, then commencement of construction. So as Mr. Sullivan indicated, the, the purpose of this really is, given that that's many months away and there's a need for soil in the near term, the idea is to work with the college district to move that soil onsite efficiently, safely, and in the meantime, the current site, the excavation site, would receive erosion control measures until such time as the project, the base project is ready to go forward, which is many months away. Does that help?
It does. I don't know if it's, the, the question is for you or for the applicant, but should there be either a longer-than-than-expected delay or simply a change of plan altogether and the next phase for that, that parcel was delayed? Is, is the, the long-term, the longer-term stable? I understand that there's an engineering firm, I did not know, know them, but there's a, there's a lengthening of that, that slope there in the steeper part, that's, that's going to be considered stable even if we, if we go along?
Again, through the chair, we understand that concern, and the idea would be that whether it's a few months or much longer, the site would be stabilized in such a way that whether, again, it's a few months or much longer, the site would be stable and there would not be a concern. So there's a grading plan, conditions of approval, it'll be reviewed and overseen by our public work staff in terms of implementation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, following up on the commissioner's question, I was wondering, can we add a condition of approval such that, we're all working diligently towards this outcome, but if something were to change on the construction of the residential site, can we bring this portion back for review so that maybe we don't end up with an empty lot? In the, if for some reason this thing falls apart, like the other businesses, like the old Lion's Restaurant, where we had them landscape it and do a few things so it's just not a bare property? Does that make sense?
In, in a case like this, the idea really would be to implement a full range of erosion control measures, and in terms of if the residential housing project would not go forward, the site today is, is vacant and, and partially vegetated, so the idea would be to put in erosion control measures if need be to hold the soil. There would be some sort of hydroseeding or whatnot to hold the soil. So the conditions would be in ways similar to what you have out there today. Soil would be brought down, but...
Soil would be brought down but stabilized. There would be erosion control measures put in place. This is not a condition where you sometimes see where there's a large amount of soil being actually brought to a site, mounded, and, and then you, if the project doesn't proceed, you've got a mound or mounds of soil on the site, and it can be unattractive, unsightly. Actually, soil will be brought down stabilized, and, you know, the circumstance would be in ways similar to what you see out there today if the project doesn't proceed.
Do I have any questions, Commissioner?
You can move on. I'm still thinking about it, though.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
Director Waltering just touched on the erosion control measures. That was actually going to be my question. It comes up in one and then twice in two. Can you describe what those measures are?
So, let me, let me just illustrate. So, this is, this is the area of, of the excavation. And as you can see, this, the, if, if you look at the, the elevation lines there, the steeper part is, is beyond the, the, the site that's being graded. So, it's, that, the area is relatively flat. And then, this shows you the, the measures that will be in place to hold back the soil and, and to prevent erosion. So, there's kind of the rolled stake down. I think they're sort of, what, the netted grass? Yeah, yeah. So, it'll be hydroseeded. This is, well, this is not the grass. This is sort of the, the rolled netting that, that holds back, yeah, erosion. So, these are, these are the immediate measures that would, would be put in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Not so sure we need the applicant to step up, but, but we are. Okay. Would the applicant, or one of them, please go to the podium. Give us a brief description if you could.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Christensen. I recently retired from the college district, but I am project manager for the residential project. That project will consist of 40 single-family homes built by Summer Hill Homes and 30 apartments for our faculty and staff. Currently, we're hoping that we will bring this to the planning commission for your approval on November 22nd or 3rd, whatever date that is, right before Thanksgiving. I have with me today Mitch Bailey, who is chief of staff for the college district, Pam Welty, who is with our construction management firm, and she is the project manager for the environmental science building where this dirt is needed, and then Eric Swanson from BKF Engineers. And he can talk to you about the erosion control measures in probably great detail. So, anyway, the, the whole reason for this is that we need the dirt now, and the project is not approved now. We've gone through architectural review. We go to Parks and Rec tomorrow night. We go to transportation November 1st, and then hopefully the planning commission in late November and city council in December. So, that's essentially what the project is all about. Would you like to hear from Eric about the erosion control, a little bit more about that?
I would, if you have time.
Yeah.
Pardon me? I know. I'm going to squash you in a minute.
Hello again. I'm Eric Swanson from BKF Engineers, civil engineer on the project. And so, we've prepared a complete erosion control plan. The project, the, the site currently has a open notice of intent to discharge with the state water board for, for erosion control. And so, we're going to be amending that plan in order to incorporate this, this section into it. Now, the, the drawings that were shown earlier were the, the, the erosion control wattles. That's somewhat deceptive looking because that's, they're, they're much smaller than that. They're probably maybe six to 12 inches in diameter, and they run along the contours of the site. And they're actually detailed in the plan down. We have a full construction plan that details what those actually look like. So, in general, we're flattening the site out. The contours are pretty far apart in the middle of, of that drawing there. And then, on the hillside, we're benching up, and we're doing a maximum slope of two to one. So, that's two vertical, two horizontal to every one vertical. And that's in accordance with the geotechnical report. So, that's a very, fairly flat surface and a very stable, and it could be there for pretty much forever. And in addition to all of that, all the bare earth that will be out there will be hydroseeding with a, a native plant type, native plant type mix, which will eventually just grow grass and stabilize the entire site. So, in general, everything is going to actually be flatter out there, so it'll be less likely that water will be running off the site.
Very good. Any other questions?
Through the chair. It may be helpful, since we have a representative here, to hear a little bit about the receiving site as well.
Sure.
My name is Pam Welty. I am with Swinerton Builders. We are the construction managers for the project that is known as the Environmental Sciences Building, also known as B-12, Building 12. It's on the far western side of the Skyline Campus. It is on what is currently now the overlook area. It will be a one-story building with four classrooms and about a 290-seat meeting area for lunches, conferences, things like that. It'll also have a full kitchen in it for conference breakfast, conference lunches, things like that. The soil that we are speaking of will come from one side of the campus and literally drive across and be used in the foundation during compaction and after trenching. We will use it as some backfill. Right now, the, the project in front of you is for 5,300 cubic yards. We're not expecting to take 5,300 cubic yards. We don't have enough space that will require all of it, and we will be creating some of our own.
So, I'll give you a question. If you don't plan on using that much, I mean, is it close to that much? Are you like two-thirds of that, do you think, or?
We won't be sure exactly because there's, there's just a lot of variables. 5,300 would be our maximum, and it would, it could be somewhere less than that. I don't imagine that it would be substantially less than that.
Okay.
Through the chair, if we could clarify, it sounds like it's a maximum up to 5,300. The, the intent of this project, this proposed grading plan, is really to avoid off-haul and impact beyond the campus. So, the question that maybe could be posed is, is the intent up to 5,300 but less if only a smaller amount is needed, and that there would be no off-haul outside of the campus? Is a question I think we should pose.
Okay. Well, you've heard the question. Do we have an answer?
I should clarify. My project, which is the Skyline B-12, that's the maximum that that single project needs between now and further down the road, between now and about middle of January. That's the only time that my project will need this soil. What happens beyond that is outside of the scope of my project.
Thank you.
There is something like 23,000 cubic yards of dirt that will have to be off-hauled. I mean, we have to get rid of to build the, the residential projects that I described earlier. There is a, there are, there's the environmental science building. There's also building one that is going to be completely replaced. They are not far along in, in, far enough along in their planning to determine how much, if any, of that dirt they will need. And then, there are some other locations on campus where dirt might be needed, but we're just not far along in those plans yet. It could be that some of this is going to have to be off-hauled by Summer Hill Homes off-site, but we won't know the extent of that until we get further along in the plans.
Thank you. Okay. This is unusual, but any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair. Oh, I do have one, one very short question, just to clarify. You don't expect there to be any need for soil on the site that you're proposing to take the soil from?
Yeah. We're not going to bring any more dirt onto that site.
If anything, you have a surplus.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Biassodi?
One more time for clarification. So, you're only going to use, let's say, 2,000 on the new building, and we're talking about 5,000. So, are you going to go and grade this site twice? Or is this going to be a one-time shot where you have a, a target elevation where you're going to grade to?
No. We're doing, this is a one-shot. 5,300 cubic yards will be off-hauled. The off-haul of the rest of it will take place through the approval process through the planning commission and the city council.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. This time, I'm going to open it up to public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Please come up to the podium and state your name.
I'm Michael Swartzberg and resident and owner within the general vicinity where I'm actually on Goodwin Drive, but we back up to College Drive. So, we actually get to oversee and, on behalf of the community, we're actually very excited for this, these projects. It's fun to watch what's going on at Skyline. You know, we get a chance to, to go to the track and exercise, and I think we're excited. The one thing that I've been watching is the traffic flow as these projects commence. And so, I know part of the condition has to do with traffic monitoring or, or traffic, you know, control. So, I'd just be curious just to know if there's going to be anything extra that's going to be implemented as these, you know, trucks come and go, especially as it relates to that one area around College and Allen, which seems to get a lot of the, the dump trucks coming and going. So, I was just curious if the traffic flow is only going to be monitored at the recipient site and the, and it looks both sites? Or is there going to be other things that are going to be implemented around the area?
Thank you.
Through the chair, with a project like this, there would be a traffic control plan, a hauling route designated and an overall traffic control plan. So, the, the residents' concerns about traffic control would be addressed. Standard requirement would be both a designated route and based on the number of, of trips, there would be a traffic control plan to address safety concerns as well.
Okay. And that would be, how far down the process would that approximately be?
That would be as part of the public works, public services approval of the grading plan. So, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, it's coming to you tonight for your review and approval, but there'll be a need for issuance of a grading permit to do this project. With the grading permit, there would be the erosion control measures required, as we discussed earlier. There would be a haul route required, and there would be a traffic control plan required, all as conditions of approval of issuance of the grading permit.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. Okay. Anybody else in the public? It's closed. We will bring it back to the commission for discussion, comments, anything? I do have one. Should there be a motion that, that is made for the resolution, correct?
That is correct. A motion to second and a roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion? To read the resolution or question? Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Please, Commissioner Pearson.
I'd like to recommend that the commission adopt the resolution recommending issuance of a grading permit based on findings of fact, one through two, and conditions of approval, one through 17.
Okay. There is a motion.
Second.
He's second.
I second.
Good luck. We have a motion and a second. So, we will have to now have a roll call, but do I need to read the resolution first of?
We've received a motion and a second regarding the resolution. I don't think that's necessary. We'll do a roll call on this. So, Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Legacy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethan?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
And Chair Chase?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any appeal period on this, or where does this go from here?
Yes, there is. There's a 10-day appeal period.
Thank you. Okay. In that case, I guess our next item is discussion, city staff discussion.
That, that's correct, and we're at that point of our agenda that we're looking for volunteers for our next architectural review committee meeting, and that meeting is going to be on November 16th.
We need some new volunteers.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to volunteer.
Well, we will take you. Commissioner Legacy, correct?
Two more, please. Chair Chase? I saw a hand go up. Thank you.
I'll do it.
And Vice Chair Biassodi, thank you so much.
What's the date on that one again?
The date on that is November 16th.
Oh, I might not be here. I may be in Oregon. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have another volunteer?
I'll suggest Mary Look.
There you go.
We can do that? We'll, we'll contact Commissioner Johnson and let her know that Vice Chair Chase, or Vice Chair Biassodi. Chair Chase declined. Vice Chair Biassodi recommended that Commissioner Johnson step in, and we'll ask her if she can do that.
Thank you very much.
And if my plans are a little bit different than what I believe they are, then I would be available if need be, but I'm pretty sure I can go.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's great.
I can be, I can be on standby as well.
There you go. Commissioner Lethan will be the standby, not Chair Chase. Okay. Do we have any other planning commission discussion, discussion?
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
I was just going to request that staff provide an update at the next planning commission meeting on the 851 Cherry Avenue item. We had discussed at the last meeting the walkway connection between Starbucks and San Bruno Avenue, and the state regulations on EV charging stations that staff was going to investigate, and we were hoping that maybe we can get an update next month.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion items? In that case, this meeting is now adjourned.